PushExcel was founded in 1975 to further MLK's vision for education. The goal was always to inspire, motivate, and educate while making sure that state, local, and federal funding would be there to make a quality education possible. What he saw convinced him, the fight had to move inside, into the classrooms, and into a community that had to demand better.
I am somebody. Sell. Excel. Excel.
Welcome back as we explore the mission and future of Rainbow Push Coalition and Push for Excellence.
In order to better understand why these programs work, we need to get behind the scenes to see how PushExcel motivates and mobilizes young people and the communities around them. The first time a young person walks onto a college campus and suddenly feels that this could be their future, amazing things begin to happen. Horizons expand, self-confidence grows, and opportunities feel within grasp. For the past 21 years, PushExcel has sponsored tours for thousands of students to visit historically black colleges and universities. These tours show young people what's possible, how to set their goals, and how to achieve them.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Sonia Whitaker, National Education Policy Director for Push for Excellence. And on behalf of our leader, Reverend Jesse Lewis Jackson, and on behalf of the Board President, Dr. Julianne Malvo, and the PushExcel Board, I'd like to thank you so much for giving your gift of time. Boy, do we have a program in store for you today. I think it's important for us to share right away that several months ago, probably about a year ago or so, as you're aware, we engaged in a task, which was to make sure that we had virtual conversations. At the time, it was referred to as Town Hall Discussions, and now Critical Thinking Series, conversations related to those things that matter in public education. Tonight, the next event in our Critical Thinking Series entitled "Shaping America's Education Agenda" is actually focused on 68 years after Brown versus Board of Education. Now, I think it's also important to start off by saying, the intent of our time together is not to admire problems. That's not what we're going to do. We're all going to identify them. Because as many of you recall, in Jim Collins' book entitled "From Good to Great", he states that any organization, in order to be effective in moving from one level to the next, really do have to stop and be clear about what the brutal facts of reality. Ultimately, our goal at the end of our conversation, after we've identified the issues that will be raised, is to talk with you about our perspective related to the expertise that we have, which would cause us to provide for recommendations that you can implement within your respective organizations as soon as yesterday. And with that being said, I'd like to pause for just a moment and turn it over to our Board President, Dr. Julianne Malvo.
Thank you so much, Dr. Whitaker, and thank all of you for joining us. This is such an important day, Brown Day. You know, May 17th, 1954, a momentous case. We always think of it as Brown versus Board of Education, but we have to remember that there were actually five cases that were bundled together to come to the moment. We were looking at cases in Virginia, in South Carolina, in Delaware, in DC, and in Kansas. These were all the places, these were separate lawsuits that the Supreme Court chose to see together under Brown, and that was the Pico, Kansas. In 1952, the court decided, so we always think of 1954, but I think of it as 1952, in terms of the beginning of the story of how we got desegregation. And coming from the perch of California, I must say also that there were cases that happened before with our Mexican-American brothers and sisters because they also were segregated by law. But Brown versus Board of Education basically said that segregation was against the law. And so the Plessy decision, Plessy versus Ferguson, separate equal, no more. The lawyers were brilliant. Of course, Thurgood Marshall, who we, our first black Supreme Court Justice, was also the first Director Counsel of the NAACP Legal Defense and Education Fund. He was one of the lawyers, but we also have to shout out the historians who worked on this, as well as the sociologists, Dr. Kenneth Clark, whose Dahl studies showed that when people were segregated, black people tended to think that we were less, we were more inferior than other people. So the Dahl studies were very pivotal for this. And what we must say about Brown is that we'll say lots today, and I know Dr. Whitaker is going to talk about where we are, but what we must say is that when they said to do this with all deliberate speed, those of us who are cynical said it means take your own sweet time. Because they did take their own sweet time, and we're still dealing with much of this. There's so much to unpack in this conversation. I'm grateful to the panelists, who are education practitioners, par excellence, who are joining us to share the work that they do and how Brown has both affected them and has helped them think about public policy from a different perspective. And so with that, with all deliberate speed, in the words of the court, with all deliberate speed, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Whitaker.
Before I, thank you so much. Before I then provide the panelists an opportunity to highlight their work, I want to do just a few housekeeping things. One of the, we, as a team, always listen and read the feedback that we get from our events, line by line and word for word, and that information is actually presented to our board. So I want to encourage our viewing audience to actually see themselves as participating audience members, those that are on Zoom, but the hundreds of you that we know are actually watching live. We want you to add your information and your comments in the chat. They literally come to my phone, and where possible, I will quote you, and I will pose your questions, not just mine, to our distinguished panelists. And so I want to share that with you also. We're also going to provide you at least two, if not three, opportunities during this live broadcast to add insight by responding to the polling questions that we have available for you. And then lastly, at the end, at the conclusion of our time together, we are going to launch the survey, which is just a few questions that we want you to ask. And literally, we build every program based on what you say is important for us to bring to you next. With that being said, we know that you have access to the amazing background in writing in the form of the official bios of each of our distinguished panelists. And so I've asked for them to take two minutes apiece to tell you whatever they want you to know about them and/or the work that they do. And we'll start, please, with Ms. Lisa Sharon Harper.
Thank you so much, Dr. Sonia, Dr. Sonia Whitaker. I'm honored to be here. I am the president and founder of Freedom Road, a consulting group that specializes in shrinking the narrative gap in our nation. We're a faith-based group, but we also do work in the secular realm as well. Right now, we're working with groups like the Carter Center and Faith in Public Life is a huge partner of ours, and many others. And so we, I started my career and vocation as a playwright, and eventually found my way onto the streets and as an activist and organizer. I kind of cut my teeth in the realm of environmental justice, but also police justice, rather, I don't know really what to call that because it's so unjust, but you know what I'm talking about. And then immigration, immigration reform. So I've written, I had a column for Sojourner's Magazine for many years, bylines at CNN and Washington Post, and profiles in The New Yorker. And so I'm just really honored to be here. And I just recently published a new book called Fortune: How Race Broke My Family and the World, and How to Repair It All. And it traces 10 generations of my family's story back to 1682. And so my ancestors were among the first to receive the wrath of the very first race laws. And so I've traced the impact of those laws on my family through the generations, and then asked the question, theological question, and also getting into some policy of what will it take for us to repair what race broke in the world?
Wow. Wow. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Harper. Mr. Makai Ali, thank you so much. We're turning it over to you now.
Well, first, I'd like to just take a moment to pay homage to those on both coasts who experienced such tragedy within the past 48 hours. And so we would just simply open up our hearts and minds and allow their names, allow their voices, allow our empathy to envelop, and remember, none of us are immune. And with that, I'm very grateful to be here with you, beautiful, talented. Is it okay for me to say beautiful? Beautiful, talented women. As a matter of fact, when I realized I would be joined by so many intellectuals, I had to literally step up my game. I had to read a book very quickly in order to be able to stand shoulder to shoulder with some of you. Your work's incredible, and what you've been able to do in your career speaks volumes. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that one of my high school teachers logged in. She's here on the line. I was a part of a civic engagement organization known as, back then was the Junior Statesman of America. Now it's called the Junior State of America Civic Engagement Organization for High School Students, nonpartisan. And what we learned was how to truly debate. One thing about the game, when you understand words, words are extremely powerful. Many of us, even as adults, suffer from a word gap because of a lack of literacy, a lack of reading, truly developing that pension. So I want to give a shout out to Carrie Peoples, who's retired. She's living down in Atlanta, Georgia, so I want to give her a shout out. I served as the President of the Governing Board of the Compton Unified School District, a position I've held since 2007, and I can honestly say this, and it is documented, that the Compton Unified School District is one of California's greatest success stories with respect to a school district which once found itself in state receivership prior to my arrival. But now boasts a tremendous amount of growth upon my arrival, fiscal solvency, fiscal prudence, and letting folks see that colored people can lead, colored people can govern, and can manage, and we know how to count. And so I'm very thankful to my colleagues I serve with, as well as our Superintendent, Dr. Darren Browley, a phenomenal steward who served in that capacity for a decade. And he will indeed be retiring, probably '25, '26, after we open up the doors to a 201-plus million-dollar high school. We just broke ground on last week with Dr. Dre, who provided the district a $10 million donation for the Performing Arts Center, and then to invest within the arts here in the community of Compton. So again, I thank you for a 40-man opportunity, and I thank you for allowing me to represent a voice that is oftentimes not heard, that of the policymaker, those who are entrusted and charged with holding systems accountable. And so again, I'm privileged to be here today.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Dr. Joy Lawson-Davis, let your voice fill this airway.
Excellent. Excellent. I am so excited to be among this group this evening. Wow. I feel privileged to be here today to share with you all the work that I've done for 35, 37 years in the field of gifted education. And my work has primarily been to open up doors and access to African-American and other underrepresented groups in our nation, nation's schools. I have served as a member of the Board of Directors of the National Association for Gifted Children. I have been a state director. Actually, I was the first African-American state director for gifted programs in the nation here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I have been in the classroom. I've been at local level. I've been a professor. And now I am a consultant. I have, I'm serving with school districts all over the country. I'm in their, in their PD programs, their professional learning programs. I'm an author, and my job, my sole purpose, I believe, here on earth is to continue to help the whole nation and the world understand the need to identify gifts and talents of all children, but particularly to take a deeper look at the gifts and talents of our people, our children who have been overlooked, underrepresented, and marginalized all over the nation. And as long as we are providing funds for these programs, and 40-some-odd states do that, the work that I do and that of my colleagues is going to be necessary. Many people don't know about gifted education program funding. They don't know about state support. They don't know about specialized schools. But my job, I believe, as an activist and an advocate, is to ensure that we get the word out, particularly in our community, to help our community understand better that our children are missing out. They are missing out on funding, on specialized programs that other children need, other children have access to every day. And so I'm grateful to be here, and I thank Dr. Whitaker and Dr. Malvo for inviting me to be a part of this important conversation. Thank you.
Absolutely. And now you know why. I was so excited about all of you together. The brain capacity on this screen has got my office smoking back here. What I also can appreciate is I must admit, never have we opened up and had so many chats right at the beginning. So I feel, so the participating audience, I want you to know, we are feeling your energy right now. We just got started. So do get those, get your responses to us. And then you're seeing me looking down is because people are shooting them over to me. With that being said, thank you again, Dr. Julianne Malvo. For those of you who have just signed on, who is the President of PushExcel, she opened up by talking to us about the intent of the law. And now I'm ready to move into getting out of the way and letting our panelists engage in spirited dialogue. In addition to you having a clear understanding about the intent of the law, it is important to recognize that three years ago, during the 65th anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education, many research reports were actually released. And the one that I've tended to hold on to the most is the one that was released entitled "Harming Our Current Future." And the purpose of this particular research report was actually to determine the extent to which the goals, I'll use the term "goals," we know that I'm referring to the law, the intent into which the goals of the law, the extent to which they have actually been reached. And the report that was released, actually, on the 65th anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education, states the following, and I'll read it very quickly. And the reason why I think it's important to refer to this report because I've not found a report that deviates from some of the facts that were stated in this report. And the report states as follows, white and Latino students are the most segregated groups. White students, on average, attend a school in which 69% of the students are white, while Latino students attend a school in which 55% of the students are Latino. Segregation for black students is rising in all parts of the United States. Black students, who account for 15% of enrollment, as they did in 1970, are in schools that average 47% black students. And Asian students, on average, attend schools in which 24% are fellow Asians. In summary, black students attend schools with a combined black and Latino enrollment averaging 67%. White and Asian students have much lower exposure to combined black and Latino students, and 22%, at 22% and 34% respectively. Who would like to respond to that?
Dr. Whitaker, before our esteemed panel response, let me just grab a couple of minutes to remind people that there are almost 200 cases still open, schools that have not been desegregated. And so while the intent of Brown was to dismantle segregation, it still has not happened. And it's just important for us to take a moment to marinate that. What we also have to do from a historical perspective, especially now, and I want to thank Brother Ali for mentioning the people who have been devastated by gun violence. But we must talk, of course, no gun violence is right. But that young white boy who killed those people, he didn't have ethnic studies. He did not have the benefits of educators like us. He did not have exposure. Otherwise, he would have known the truth from a lie. But here's what we also know. We know there's still no equity. We know there is massive resistance. He's reflecting what happened back in the 1950s, massive resistance to our equality. Teachers were fired because they joined the NAACP. Massive penalties were imposed. And so while we commemorate Brown, and I'm just so in awe of the educators and their opening comments, I want us to be real and make it plain, and it's never been more plain than what we experienced on Saturday when we saw those people in Buffalo, New York, gunned down for the simple act of going to the grocery store.
So let me pose, thank you very much, let me pose a very specific question for you to respond to. Thank you, Dr. Malvo, relevant to the stats that I presented. How far do you believe that we've come as a nation as it relates to the goals established in the US Supreme Court ruling? Mr. Ali?
So I'll add this to the discussion. I think it's a phenomenal opportunity to really talk about Brown v. Board, but it's more important to talk about the work of advancing equity and opportunity, especially for black children, even in liberal California.
Yes.
Scrape the bottom of the barrel, testing below children with special needs. But it's really important to understand educational access and a lot less to do with building access. What we may have increased are opportunities to school housing for students. But we did not address opportunity advancement and the very promise of the American dream. And so as we look at providing students seats in classrooms, that dream is lost. Now, particularly, I'm an advocate for black children, but I'm an advocate for all children. And I care less, in my official capacity representing many, I care less about the child sitting around. I care more about the caliber of the education, the treatment, and the opportunities. And in many instances, let me just, let me digress. I want to make sure I clean this up, make it plain, and make it clear. And I don't want to be misunderstood. I care deeply about the vibrancy and the celebration, the wonderful fabric, the multiplicity of race, ethnicity, backgrounds, identities. But I believe what is extremely valuable is the innovation that lies within the intersection of pedagogy and policy. And what we've done, now let's get back to us. We've now treated education as an industry as opposed to a calling. And in many instances, we're perpetuating, we're perpetuating what was from '54 to '84. We didn't see many schools desegregate until the '80s, including schools in Los Angeles, as liberal of a place this is. So it's important to talk about how we've kept children out, but it's more important for me to talk about when we get into positions that we're not simply the custodian and/or the guardian of hegemony, the guardian of the bureaucratic order. We're innovators, and we're leaning into bringing forth solutions that we know work, like concurrent dual enrollment, early-middle college, college and career pathways, the investment in early childhood education, putting the presidential administrations to fully fund IDEA. All of us ought to be doing that.
And that's, and you know what? I think that's a good lead in to. I'm going to take that and ask Ms. Lisa Sharon Harper the same question, but I'm going to take a bit of a different twist. I'm going to ask you, given your background, intellect, and experience as well, how far do you think we've come as a nation? How do you feel about it?
It's a great question. Thank you so much, Dr. Whitaker. I think, when you ask the question, how far we've come, I think the question is from where? And so we have to understand where, from where have we come? And I think I go back to that very first race law that was passed in 1662. That's where we come from. And I have to say, we haven't come very far from that space. That very first race law in 1662 established a hierarchy of human belonging in our nation by deciding who, where citizenship would come from. Does citizenship come through the male line or the female line? If it came through the male line, it would be a white line in the case of those those mixed-race children that are running around, a product of enslaved women who were raped by their masters. And so the children began to take their cases to court and win, and walk off the plantations in Virginia. And that's why in 1662, the legislature said, wait a minute, we need to change the law here. So they changed it, and they made it in perpetuity. So if your mother was enslaved, then that is your citizenship. You are now not a citizen and therefore able to be enslaved, and they added two words, "in perpetuity." So through that very first race law, you can see that, one, the people who matter here are white men. Two, the people who don't matter and whose bodies are viewed and understood as being created to create wealth for white male bodies. They exist to protect the profit margins of white men. And so from that point forward, compromises and decisions have been made all the way through history. Three-Fifth Compromise, 1877 Compromise, several Supreme Court rulings, Plessy versus Ferguson, which was finally overturned by Brown versus the Board of Education. This was our moment. Brown versus Board of Education was the moment when we finally had a breath, finally had standing, and actually protection of our rights given by the 14th Amendment. But what we did not get was we did not get economic rights.
It's 5 o'clock.
What we got was the recognition of our civil rights, and the recognition, rather, of our economic rights, or our right not to be poor, was never realized. And as a result, you had other things that passed around the same era, FHA home loan, or rather FHA formula that determined the value of property, then created the foundations through which we now solidified the hierarchy of human belonging through our education system. Because what they said in that FHA algorithm was, if you have one black person living on that land, then that land is now worth less. And when we figured out how we're going to pay for public schooling, we did it through those land taxes, through that property tax. What we have here in Philadelphia, where I live, is we have the poorest large city in America. We have a city where upwards of 50% of the children in public schools are poor. We have a school where, we have a situation where up to 80% of the children in those public schools are black and brown, and poor. And so, and the majority of children impacted by closures of schools have been black and brown. This is in equity at its highest. But I have to say, within the construct of America, and how we set it up from the beginning, and the ongoing struggle that we see that is manifested clearly through what happened in Buffalo on Saturday, it is working as it was designed.
Wow. I think that, is that Dr. Davis? Dr. Davis, I believe, it seems like we can all agree that our schools are as segregated, if not more segregated, than they were when the US Supreme Court voted unanimously that segregation in schools was unconstitutional. What I want to ask you directly is, when schools are not desegregated, what would you identify as some of the potential drawbacks and/or perhaps benefits to that?
First of all, I want to acknowledge that in the field that I work in, in the groups of students that I have identified with and worked with, and the educators who work with them, we have some of the most segregated programs of all. We can go into a school in America where the majority of the students in the school may be black or brown, but in that school, they have identified a classroom, a space, educators who work with what they call the gifted students. And if there are any white kids in that school, or any Asian students in that school, they are the majority, if not all, of the students who have been identified as bright, as able, as talented, as gifted. And so we recognize that our schools are still deeply segregated. And so we, we recognize that our schools are, are still deeply segregated within. They're deeply segregated within. And what our responsibility is, is we have to ensure that we are working hard to, to, to develop program models and policy. I want to go back to what Brother Ali said about access and equity. You know, we, you know, we could spend our time, you know, tonight discussing the laws, you know, discussing where we, where we were. But we want to think about today, what impact has Brown had on where we are right now? And are people actually living and abiding by the law as it was designed to be, you know, developed? And the answer to that question is no, is no. Not only are there many schools like Dr. Malvo, many districts who are still in court, who are still not abiding Brown, but there are also schools within districts that have, or supposedly they've abided by Brown, and they're still segregated. So there has to be, you know, some way that either on a national level, on a state level, locally, that we address the segregation within districts across the country. And I know that, you know, we're here because we, you know, there's some of us who, you know, who have an interest in a particular part of the nation or not. But we, but we have a nation here that's, that's still hung up and caught up in segregation. We have a nation here that's still so caught up in racism and discrimination that we are hurting children every day. And so as we think about, you know, where are the pockets of success? I'd like for us to be able to know that there are some pockets of success. I'm so excited to hear about the great things that are going on in Compton that might, we might be able to take those pockets of success and replicate those in other parts of the country and replicate some of those successes so that we can meet the, meet the letter of the law.
I appreciate you, you saying that, Dr. Joy Lawson-Davis, because the second half of our time together, we're going to, and also be natural with that. But I want the participating audience to know that the second half of our conversation is going to be about making for recommendations that can be implemented at the local, state and federal levels so that the successes that some of you have had within your respective organizations can actually be replicated throughout our nation. How did we get here? I think that's an important question for each of us to ponder on. And I must admit, what made me think to pose that question is, in particular, is reflecting on the data that I presented regarding the fact that our schools are now as segregated, if not more segregated than they were during the passing of the law. From your background, expertise and intellect, can you give us a summary from your perspective of how we actually got here? And then we'll talk about moving forward. Mr. Ali? How'd we get here?
Now, I want to just take a different, I want to take a different approach. We're here. Right, we're here. And we did far better pre-integration in several instances. And so we're here, but I believe that there's so much opportunity if given students exposure and given them high-quality pedagogy, making their investments early within their lives. And so if we stay here, we're going to miss the opportunity, as has been the case with everything else, including marijuana. I'm going to let that simmer, I'm going to let that marinate. Brother sitting in jail and others are living all over in tone neighborhoods because it's in vogue, cultivate. Now, I'm going to let that just sit right there. And so because we're here, why not advance the discussion with respect to what we ought to be doing and how we ought to be providing opportunities for our students, whether it's blockchain tech, digital currency, pathway technical, high schools. There's a trades gap within our country. The segregation that many of us are experiencing is not even the same level of segregation as was the case pre-fifty-four. We're talking about economic segregation in many of our urban centers where the public schools where the poor and/or students with special needs go. The private schools are poaching our top-tier black talent and they're poaching all of our black athletes. We're fighting charter schools. Folks have already left that fight. And so again, I believe that if we, we don't get out of the ditch, it's going to be very difficult at some point to progress forward. When you start talking about gifted children, as Dr. Davis was referencing earlier, well, I believe all students can be gifted. I believe poverty did not necessarily equate to you being uneducable. Again, we have to, and I keep going back to us because around the country, we're in charge now. We're running the school systems and not yielding much greater success. So if I listen to Dr. Malvo, Doc, Ms. Harper, Dr. Davis, they can all talk about that other teacher who told them what they would not be. But let's talk about what we're doing and what we're telling children and we look just like them. So it's far greater, it's far draconian. So I want to put the onus back on me as a governing authority in a school system where black children are underachieving. What do we do? You found the Office of Black Student Excellence and you invest the same amount of money as would be the case for EL students. First, unfunded, unfunded. Fifteen hundred students, between thirty to forty-five million dollars of investment. I'm not saying they're not worthy. But it's a race to the bottom. And if we continue to argue and debate, guess what happens? You got thirteen years to mold this mind. Thirteen years to mold this mind. And you're in competition with TikTok, Rihanna and everybody else. Not Frankie Beverly. You're in competition with Instagram. It was literally allowing folks to curate an existence and a life that's nothing other than fantasy. But guess what? Our pupils are believing it and every single underserved, historically marginalized student believes it as well.
Wow. Let me ask you this question. And I'm going to call for, if we can pull it up. First of all, let me, let me engage our participating audience and let you know I'm going to read to you one of the polling questions, but then also ask the panelists to respond. And so for those of you who are talking to us in the chat, I want you to know that we received many thanks to all the panelists for the engaging and powerful discussion that you're having with us today. We also have someone that said they would like to speak as one who was alive and participated in segregated schools through junior high on Capitol Hill in DC. The question that I want to pose, and if Rose can pull for me the poll, is do you believe that the most effective manner in which to educate black students is by ensuring that they attend desegregated schools? I was going to give this to Mr. Ali first, but I think I'll give this to, to Dr. Joy Lawson-Davis and then, and then swing back around. Do you believe that the most effective manner? And then if you look on the screen, you'll see that the panelists, we are engaging you. We want you to, in coming to this conversation by giving us your opinion. And I'll repeat, do you believe that the most effective manner in which to educate black and brown students is by ensuring that they attend desegregated schools? We're asking you to pick one choice. Now, the only people that can access the online poll are those that are in the Zoom. But we know that there are hundreds of you that are watching this live. So we're going to ask you to use the same YouTube link that you're using to go ahead and respond to that in the chat box as well. We'll pause for just a moment and then we'll get Dr. Joy Lawson-Davis to gear up to respond to that. And then we'll ask Mr. Ali to do the same as well as Ms. Harper. Cool? Okay. While the audience, participating members are answering the poll question, Dr. Joy Lawson-Davis, may I turn it over you to ask whether or not you believe that the most effective manner in which to educate black and brown students is by ensuring that they attend desegregated schools?
Black and brown students, like all students in this country and around the world today, need to have access to, as Brother Ali calls it, high-quality schools. And those high-quality schools have to be competitive schools and have to enable students to be able to work with people from all different cultural backgrounds. We, we do no good to our students today in today's world unless we can have an equitable program model, you know, across the board. We do no good for our students today by placing them in environments where they are the only students of their racial background, their cultural background, their community background in that environment. And when I speak about these students, I'm speaking about them at the secondary level and the early college programming, the dual enrollment programming, you know, entering into higher education. Because when they enter into higher education, they, they will have opportunities to be in environments where they will be around students who are predominantly from their own race. But they also will have opportunities and oftentimes will be compelled to be competitive. And to be competitive oftentimes, these students also need broad experiences. They need broad experiences. And so I, I am a proponent of providing excellent educational opportunities for students where they are giving them the equity and the access, the funding, the funding. I have to kind of go back again to Brother Ali. If we're going to set these, we're going to, we're going to do better now. We're going to do better now. We want to make sure that the funding, the funding formula changes. We want to make sure that equitable funding and access starts as early as preschool education for our students. And that we, that we know that we can start there, providing them with what we call early and sustained access to high-quality education, they will be more capable. They will be more, they will have the ability. It's not that they don't have the ability early on, it's because they don't have access. They don't have access to whatever other students have. And so our goal is to ensure that they have access. The potential is there, the potential is there. We already know about that. We know the history, the history of our people. We know the legacy, we know where the brilliance lies. But we know also that without equitable access, as early as primary school, all of the way through middle school into secondary and, and higher education, these students will lose out. They will lose out every time. So if we're going to change things, we're going to change funding formulas, we're going to change policies to make sure that students have access to high-quality education, no matter what household they come out of, what neighborhood they come from, what pack is they're in, that they're going to have access.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Mr. Ali, can you talk with us about your perspective regarding whether or not you believe that the most effective way to educate black and brown students is via desegregation?
The best way to educate black and brown are any historically marginalized is through raising the level of expectation. Raising the level of expectation. There's an expectation gap that exists in America's schools today. Literacy last. And everything else first. I'm afraid of math, you should be afraid of math, right? Low expectation gap because you believe you couldn't achieve. Well, guess what? They won't be able to achieve either, which is why we have to look at education the same way you look at that bartender, that mixologist who brings in innovative creations and colors that lures your eyes and satiate your taste. The same as that gastrol pub where they write and you fly to Copenhagen, Denmark to be able to have a delectable meal because somebody, Anthony Bourdain, rest in peace, he wrote about it. That is how we ought to feel about educating students. And how do you take that mixology? Well, you do it through innovative approaches which embrace student achievement. You create extracurricular hubs and internship programs like what we've done in Compton by with esports, a gaming club, bonus tracks, a similar, excuse me, seminar-style internship course with music executives offered through a partnership with Capitol Records. We took that all over the country. We took it to Nashville with Dr. Sean Joseph. We took it to Atlanta with Dr. Lisa Herring. We took it to New York to the P-Tech High School in Crown Heights, Brooklyn, in order to find innovative ways to look at the delivery model of instruction and then inject, inject the early college component, dual enrollment. We have to ensure that students understand, who wants to be in school, high school for four years? Why can't he do it in two? Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. But these billionaires, they skip college and off they go to Silicon Valley, off they go to Wall Street. They're creating iPhones that all of us use because of innovation, opportunity and exposure, which is our responsibility as educators. I keep bringing it back to our responsibility, our social responsibility, our moral obligation. And we want our children to go to the University of California system or the Cal State system. And we know that the SAT system or the test to bias sue the UC Regents, which is what we did, the California Association of Black School Educators and the Compton Unified School District, proffered a lawsuit. Won, very victorious in abolishing the SAT and the ACT as an admissions requirement within the UC system, which are the pinnacle institutions. UCLA ranks as the top public school in the world. Why can't black and brown children have access? Oh, their parents must offer a high level of test prep so that they can achieve absolutely unequivocally. Not the greatest indicator of academic success is the GPA and it's always been. If we're going to love with the plan for folks, we just simply cannot let it be about cliche hashtags and bumper stickers. You can't jump on every single bandwagon that comes along with the tutti horn. You're going to be in it ten toes down if we're talking about saving our humanity and saving our community.
Thank you so very much. Ms. Lisa Sharon Harper, to what extent do you believe that the most effective manner in which to educate black and brown students is via desegregated schools?
My mother sat next to a box of books that was in the principal's office of her elementary school, which is one block from where I'm sitting right now in South Philly. And she was, she was sitting next to that box of books because she was one of the smartest kids in her class. There were three honor students in her, her class in the nineteen fifties here in Philadelphia. And as an honor student, her job was not to learn. Her job was to carry messages for the teacher back and forth like a mule throughout the school. The teachers were white, the school was black. Her mother tried to get her into the white school that was two blocks away, but she was told that she was out of district. The little white boy who lived right next door from her went to the white school. She looked into that box of books and she saw, she saw that day what she is worth to the city of Philadelphia. The books that she was, that were sitting next to her were about to be integrated into her school. They came from that little white school two blocks away. They had no covers, they had, they had pages missing, they had stuff cut out. They had stuff written in the margins, the whole way. And that's when, that's the day that she learned that she was less than. She was not worthy of training up and preparing to lead the world. And I think that that is really the question. What do we believe about our students? Are we, do we believe that they can and should lead the nation and lead the world? If we don't, then we track them, we track them into gen ed, we track them into, into jail. We track them out of school so that they don't have any classes, they have no books, they have no teachers. And in many of our, many of our public schools in our large cities, they don't even have lockers because the school does not expect them to have books. Can you imagine going to a school with no books? So I, the question of expectation is absolutely at the height of it. So what do our black and brown students need? Our black and brown students need a school system and a nation that sees them as being worthy to train up to lead the nation. If we did that, then we would restructure the way that schools are funded. If we did that, then we would restructure the way that we even think about how we push and where we push our best teachers. I had a conversation with the Los Angeles Unified School District Chair of the Board back in two thousand. She said something that shocked me. She said something that shocked me. She said, she was an African American woman. She said, um, the way that we decide where teachers go is through property taxes. Because the property taxes tell us how much we will have in order to, to pay them. So that the really qualified teachers get pushed into the very, very rich schools, the rich parts of our, of our district. I said, isn't that racist? And she said, yes, it is. That's what we're trying to change right now, but that's the way things work. So I really do believe that we're not gonna make the major change that we need until we start thinking on the macro scale, asking the question of how do we repair what the hierarchies of human belonging created in our nation, including the education system. And that, that will take reparation. That will take the, the full-scale transformation of our school systems.
Powerful. I want to turn this back over to the two panelists and ask you to, to respond in any way that you would like to, to what you've heard so far. In other words, I want to get out of the way. Dr. Davis?
Yes, I, um, you know, I, I totally agree. We, you know, there has to be a, a you know, after all that we've already done and we realize in so many ways that we haven't been successful. You know, we, we just have to be, begin thinking about restructuring, about change in a massive way. The system for funding and school, of schools doesn't work. It's, it's built on a systemic discriminatory practice. It, it just doesn't work. Uh, the system for, um, for assigning teachers to school that, that our sister just told us about, that doesn't work. It's unfair. It's discriminatory. It's, uh, it, it, it places students, teachers in schools many times who, who are taking the position, but they haven't learned all the content, the pedagogy that they need to learn at undergraduate and graduate levels. Uh, so that doesn't work either. Teacher education in this nation is in, in deep trouble, in deep trouble. Teacher education, the way that we, we set it up, the way that we force people into taking, uh, assessments that don't have a lot to do with whether or not they're gonna be great teachers, um, in, in the schools, none of that works. And, and so what we, we're, we, we go two steps ahead and then we back up. We go two steps ahead and then we back up. You know, it, it's admirable and, and powerful when, uh, we have school districts and organizations coming together to sue the universities for the use of these, 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 these tests. SAT, ACT. We know those tests don't say a whole lot about who these young people are. We know that they don't. And they don't, and they never have given us the evidence about SAT and ACT for whether or not the child is gonna be successful in our education. So we already know that. Well, yet we still, we still have, many institutions have, have taken them away. They, they have worked on that, but some are still holding on, holding on. So we, we know that also has to change. Go ahead.
If I may just add value, two, two different things in particular. We have moved, which is a positive thing, from a focus on where we were as it relates to Brown versus Board of Education and slid into the where we are right now. We're dancing the, between the where we are now and where we want to be. And, and time and time again, as you have spoken, I, I'm hearing equity, equity, equity. And, and I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that there is a, a teacher in the Chicago Public School System right now. Um, I'll tell you her first name. Her name is Christine. And you are not gonna believe what I'm about to tell you. And she has reached out to me and others because she has to raise one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars to take the students in Chicago to the zoo, you all.
Right.
Did you hear what I just said?
I did.
A real life story. I actually just reached out to her and said, get on there. There is a teacher, I repeat, in Chicago, which is just twenty miles away from my school district where we take students not only downtown, but we take them to Washington DC. I thought she was joking.
Right.
She's gotta collect her money by next Friday in order for the students to get on the bus the next week in the United States of America.
The next week.
The next week.
Right.
That's problematic in nature. And so, so in the interest of remaining extremely focused on our goal, which is to ensure that all students gain equitable access to a quality education, that would be related to field trips, which we know impact our students socially and emotionally, experimentally. Mike, the question that I want to pose, and I, I'll give this to Ms. Harper and then swing it back around, is what role do you believe that curriculum can play in leveling the playing field as it relates to achieving our goal of ensuring that all students gain equitable access to a quality education?
Curriculum must include books. Hello. Let's just start with that.
And let me, let me just say that we have, I've got to say, we've got a panel. We've got an audience member that sta- stated that her name is Dr. Wanda, and she said, we must get our children reading again. We've got to get books in their hands. I'll let you take your hands.
Yes. Um, what does curriculum, curriculum has a lot to do with it, actually. I, 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 in my own story, I started out in the Philadelphia school system and then in junior high and high school, went into Lower Cape May Regional High School, South Jersey. And I was the, our family was the only Black family in a fifteen mile radius. And I went from a, a sixty percent Black city into that. And the curriculum changed massively when I did that. And I got to college and I realized that I did not know who Gloria Naylor was. And I had never heard of Maya Angelou, and I had never heard of womanism or any of this stuff, which was coming up around that same time in the nineteen eighties. I, I went back to my high school and I said, how can I have gone through four years of high school and never have heard of all of these amazing, and Richard Wright, I mean, all of these amazing, amazing Black authors that were never introduced to me. Instead, I read Shane, right? I read, um, nineteen eighty-four. We read all of the white classics, but it was, they were not, I never saw anybody who looked like me. I didn't know it was possible for people who looked like me to be brilliant and to turn a word. And, and to know how to use words and to know that that is not white to do that. That is as black as it gets to turn a word, to know how to turn a word. And so what does it look like then for us to, to put these books on a full curriculum? Not only of the great literature, but also of the great thinkers like W. E. B. Du Bois um, into the hands of our young people and have them think and, and discuss it and debate it. That is what, what it will take, um, to build the minds of the next generations of leaders.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Ali, what role do you believe that curriculum can play in, in ensuring that Black students gain equitable access to a quality education?
What's very important is this. But I want to be the wet blanket at the picnic. Teacher preparatory universities ought to be graded, same as you do medical schools. You're ostensibly releasing folk, I said releasing folk, from collegiate institutions to take on jobs of last resort. It is something to do to get by. I have children. I want a six hour a day job to pick my children up. I want to get my loans paid back, et cetera. We're not turning out educators. We're not. The proof with the pudding isn't eating. The fact of the matter is that when you look at a study that was released in two thousand seven, a report by the National Assessment of Educational Progress known as NATE. It found that just eighteen percent of Black eighth graders, eighth graders reach reading proficiency. In two thousand fifteen, Nate found that only seventeen percent of Black twelfth graders were proficient at reading. We know that has now been exacerbated. So when you talk about learning loss, well, you didn't lose anything you never learned. The fact of the matter is, you can go out and buy all of the curriculum, but you have to have instruction, meaning professional development, so that teachers understand how to deliver the instructional model and the appropriate pacing guides in order to help them along the journey. Remember something now. School districts adopt curriculum every seven to ten years. There's a, there are tremendous amount of supplements. And that's a whole nother game and a whole nother racket. Anytime the textbook company has an office off of Fifth Avenue in a beautiful high-rise building, and the company is publicly traded, what is that telling you? With respect to the money, the industry we've created known as education.
Yeah.
So you're gonna tell me I can have all of the devices, device means absolutely nothing if the teacher is not properly trained in instructional technology. Your child could get more from structured PE and somebody who simply reads with them every single day utilizing well-defined teaching methodology, science of reading perhaps. School district, what even called the district name? Haven't adopted literacy curriculum in ten years, ten years. And every single person was advocating for social justice. And I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, but, but the greatest ill, folks, let me just, let me say this. People learn how to read with a touted Bible by moonlight.
Come on.
Moonlight, not candlelight, because he would got caught. I say he would got caught. Moonlight. These folks were navigating. They were navigating seas. And you're telling me that with, I got two cell phones here. I got about three or four laptops around here, iPads up the We can't teach a child to read in America? And there's every excuse under the sun. So absolutely unequivocally not. Curriculum would mean nothing if in fact you do not have people who truly love the profession and who want to learn. It's like a preacher exegeting a scripture. What folks are to exegete some curriculum and instructional design in order to improve the lives of Black children, Brown children, Native American children, special education children with even a greater price tag on their heads. And people are benefiting from non-public schools and that whole industry therein. I could have left Compton, but have, but don't get me to cuss in it because we, this is recorded.
Right.
I could have left Compton and did like everybody else. But the reality is, is the biggest problem is many of our children just need to know that there's a Dr. Malvo and what it took her to get that doctoral degree.
That's powerful. That's powerful.
They have never met her before. They've never watched someone put stockings on for crying out loud.
Yes.
Let alone a beautiful eyeglasses, etc. Mentor, model, modeling.
Mr. Ali, let me pull the mic from you for just one second.
Done.
This is, this is, this is a perfect, this is a perfect lead into the question that I want to pose to Dr. Joy Lawson Davis. And then I'll have a one final question, and then we're gonna go into recommendations. While we're talking about curriculum and instruction, I'm gonna pose a question and then I'm going to tell you why I posed this question. The question that I want to pose is, to what extent do each of you believe that the assessments that Black students are given, give us an accurate assessment on what they know and are able to do? And the reason why I ask that question is because when stepping into, to my new role as Deputy Superintendent in the school district for which I served, uh, immediately upon being hired, or right before I was hired, I began to take a look at the test scores. And I'm asking this question also because we refer to test scores a lot. And the test scores were dis, they were dismal. But when I began to visit school by school by school, as you can imagine, as the new deputy, people wanted to know what I thought. And I think they were surprised at what I said at the first meeting. You want to know what I said? I said, the test scores that I saw before I got hired into this district are actually not an accurate reflection of the intellectual capabilities of the students that I just saw. The students that I saw know more than we think that they know. So my question again is, to what extent do we believe that the assessments that we are placing in front of those students give us what we need to know about their intellectual potential? Dr. Davis?
Uh, absolutely nothing, nothing. The assessments that we're utilizing in schools uh, from the basic skills test that we utilize, so the state standardized tests do nothing to tell us how brilliant, how creative, how innovative, how, uh, resourceful these kids are. Because number one, there, there's so many of these kinds of traits and characteristics that we can't measure on a paper and pencil test. There's so many that we cannot measure on a paper and pencil test. And you're right. We have to measure students' ability by observation, but we also have to measure their ability by observation in a classroom environment with a classroom teacher who's expecting that the student has a mind, has a brain, that, with a teacher who's expecting something from these kids. Who's in, who's innovative him or herself, who's creative. A classroom teacher who cares enough about the kids to dig deeply when they see the same child coming to school every day, kind of lost and, you know, kind of, you know, fagged out every day. And yet they know there's something great going on in their child's mind, but they're not willing sometimes to even design their lesson, design the curriculum to meet the needs of the student. The, the assessments that we use are biased. The assessments that we use, uh, they measure standardized or basic skills that students learn in school, in book. And again, if they don't have the right books and don't have the right teacher, they're not gonna learn that. And so, no, the, the assessments that we utilize don't tell us who these kids really are. They don't tell us. And, uh, when we, when we equally utilize assessment, psychological assessment, individualized IQ assessment. We know that those tests for the most part are biased, are discriminatory. And yet we use them every single day to, to change the life of a child, to change the life of a child. We, we do that assessment and once that's done, we put that on the record. And then we set up a meeting and we say, this is how we're going to, how we're going to govern and guide this child's life from here, here forward. And yet we know that the assessment is not the most appropriate way in order to force to measure who this student is, who this person is.
I think Dr. Davis also, when, in the moment when we get to recommendations that we can go right back there and talk about, I just want to add value, exactly what is happening within respective organizations to address exactly what you have articulated. I want to do two things, if I may. Want to engage the audience by providing for them a poll question, but I also want to read, uh, the chat. I think this is Ms. Mitchell who's saying that we must also keep in mind, and so she's given, you know, there a, a statement relevant to some of what she heard, may not be just now, but in general, I want to honor her in her time. She says, we must also keep in mind that the teachers in the underserved communities are serving as a part of counselor and mentor, uh, father, father figure of some degree for many students. Many stu, of the students are dealing with life struggles, just trying to eat and stay alive. So in addition to being teachers, they have to fight for resources, like that teacher who I'm trying to work with now to get one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine cents for. Uh, and they have to fight to get the resources that they need to do their work. The poll question that I want to ask, and then I'll ask one of the panel members to respond to this. And then we need to slide right into some of the recommendations and also provide you an opportunity to highlight the work that you are doing to come back. Some of what we shared, uh, is as follows. How confident, uh, do you believe, how confident are you that most people possess the political will to act upon what we know should be done, done? And in fact, it just made me think about a quote. I want to say it's by William Bracy, who says, we know where the problems lie. We know where the resources are needed. The question is, to what extent do we possess the political will to act upon what we know? And so I, I'll ask, I'll pose this question to Mr. Ali and also engage our audience by having you answer it, uh, in the poll. Uh, Mr. Ali, how confident are you that most people possess the political will to act about, act upon what we know? And then we'll go into recommendations.
They, they don't act, they don't possess the political will because if you're a politician in many instances, you want to move up. And there are a couple of doors you don't want to nail shut. We won't get into that at this point, but the fact of the matter is, is that oftentimes, see, see, when you're a multimillionaire on either side of the political spectrum, you're free to say and do what you so desire. You can self-finance or you have friends in a circle, they could easily go do an independent expenditure. They can leverage the super PAC and get you to where you need to be. In many instances in our community, that's not the case. So you're subjected to the political winds, which can blow you in or out of office. And so the reality is that for many of us local folks, our, our ambition is to be on the ground among the people doing that which is equitable and just. So we have the fortitude because I've been on the board for fifteen years and my other colleagues have been there, some of them a little bit longer and a little bit shorter, but we
because I've been on the board for fifteen years and my other colleagues have been there, some of them a little bit longer and a little bit shorter, but we have tenure. It's not the case all over America. Like I could cite instances where we know that there's gross and negligent student outcome. And let me jump back to that piece about assessment. There are two assessments used in the school system, summative and or formative. I'd be more inclined to believe that many are not even keenly aware of how each contrasts and or compare. But if I had to put my finger on, on an assessment model, it would be more formative, especially in some urban systems where you're really trying to assess as well as provide uh, utilize key indicators to increase and enhance the quality of learning and instruction and then the desired increase in student achievement. What we found is that many school systems simply do data cleanup. Data cleanup gets you to where you want to be. You check the box and move on.
Yeah.
I'd like to share a thought on this. Is that okay?
Please do.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
I'm just thinking, I mean, I, I first of all, I just want to say I absolutely agree. Um, uh, Honorable Dr. Ali, um, with what you just said, what you just said is that basically we are fighting a David and Goliath situation. And we are the David and they are the Goliath. And we're talking about money sources. And the reality that we're, we're really up against, um, the hurricane winds of where money can push politics. But I want to push back a little bit on that, if you don't mind. I want to push back because in a democracy, there are more of us than there are of them. And, um, in a democracy, we have the ability to move mountains through our votes. And also in a capitalist system, we have the ability to move mountains through our dollars. So what we need to do is we need to organize and we need to organize our dollars and our votes. And when we, when it comes down to it, um, no, I do not believe we have the political will right now, but I do believe it's possible for us to get there. And this year, I believe it's possible for us to get there. Why? Because we are facing right now the greatest crisis that our nation has experienced since the beginning of the Civil War, the years preceding the Civil War. Dr. King said in nineteen sixty-seven in his book, Where Do We Go From Here? That's right over my left shoulder. He said that the segregationist, um, which we should just understand today to be the white Christian nationalist, would prefer an American form of fascism than to have democracy. If democracy means it requires equality. And I think that that's exactly what we are seeing come to pass right now. That we are seeing white Nat-, white Christian nationalists move our nation off of the cliff of fascism. And I think that we have a lot of white liberals who don't want that and a lot of moderate people who don't want that, even some conservatives who have been thinking, I really want that. Who I think that we could gain the political, um, the political, uh, will to, to do a wholesale transformation of our nation. That's why I mentioned the word reparation because we're talking about the need for repair. People now see beyond a shadow of a doubt, we need repair. So if we were to push and push hard, not only with our dollars, but also with our votes this season, I think it's possible.
Thank you. Wow. Powerful. Now we want to slide, many of you have done an amazing job of providing recommendations to the points that you made as you go, but this really is your time to shine. And so I would like to give each of you two minutes apiece to talk about what is happening within your respective organizations and or school districts to address the need to better ensure that students and or adults have equitable experiences. Uh, Mr. Ali, would you give us this? And then we will move, we will close a few minutes later with recommendations that you have. In fact, you could do both. This is what's happening in my respective organization. And then this is what I think should happen on a national level because all of us work on a national level also. I just thought about that. Okay, Mr. Ali?
Yes, I serve as president of the Compton School District, but I also serve as the founder of the California Association of Black School Educators. The organization's objective is to advance equity and opportunity for all students in the classroom, but with a specific focus on black students who consistently score among the lowest pupil subgroups in the country. It is because of this and it's because of black students that, that we've leaned in. We do a couple of conferences a year. We're going to be in Napa July ninth through the thirteenth. We're going to be in Napa for our Summer Institute focusing on the black boy. And so when we talk about the achievement gap and, and you hear this oftentimes, we, we less often focus on the expectation gap, as I referenced earlier, the, the often implicit assumption that black students will not do as well. This only harms black students by offering them an excuse when they achieve less than others would. And so one of CAPS's crowning achievements was the development of a blueprint for education equity that contained long, medium and short-term best practices and interventions that districts, we don't care if you're a school district, a charter authority, a community college, a county office of education, that absolutely means nothing. We're talking about interventions that systems can implement to boost student achievement and offer an equitable education to all students. I'm very pleased to note that many of the ideas that we've advocated for, like better data tracking, diversifying the teacher workforce and eliminating the SAT slash ACT as a requirement for college admission and pushing for expanded college and career opportunities have already started taking effect. And we see legislation moving through the halls of Sacramento, but we even see the work that we've been able to do collaborating with our friends in Oregon, our friends in Arizona, as well as our friends in Nevada. So we're talking about the gold rush. I'm talking about the black brush. We're talking about chiseling the minds, chiseling the minds of young black pupils and ensuring that we fill their minds with what they need in order to be successful. One last point, I'm going to be quiet. I talked earlier about the notion of blockchain tech and digital currency. You know, one of the areas that CAPS is looking at is blockchain technology and, and note that I say blockchain and not cryptocurrency, those two are very different, even though cryptocurrency cannot exist without blockchain technology. One of our senior advisors and policy consultant, he's been leading the organization, working very closely with the Digital Currency Traders Alliance, a nonprofit focusing on consumer protection and education within the blockchain space. I'm talking about folks moving on down a career pathway within the career technical education debate and the career pathway technical high school discussion to open up an associate degree program in blockchain development. Let, let's simply think stratospheric. You know, preacher once said, why settle for better when best is available? There's nothing greater than best. So let us look, in California, you know, there's earthquakes. I always use the term, let's be tectonic. Let's move the earth. Let's look to the stars far beyond. We can dream as much as we want to. But guess what? Some of us are in a position to make it a reality and I am, and I'm going to do all that I can to advocate for those who've been lost, historically marginalized and left behind. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Ali. Ms. Sharon Harper, in closing, recommendations for what can be done relevant to some of the, the work, the amazing work that you've done to address this topic in particular. Now's your time.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Well, honestly, I am focused like a laser on two things. I'm focused like a laser on truth telling and reparations as a long-term solutions for our nation. Um, because there's no way for us to have that deep transformation that I talked about unless we're willing to do a very concerted, intentional, well-funded, like massively funded as, as in Ukraine war funded, uh, initiative that, that, uh, moves us toward truth-seeking, truth-listening and truth-telling about how, who we are, how we got here and where we are and where we want to go. And then reparation is not just about putting together great policies, although we need those in the, in the short run. What I'm talking about though is, is the transformation of where we are going. We're talking about, um, completely restructuring how we are, our education is funded and what is our intent, intention for the students that we are funding. Um, and then finally, um, to do that deep healing work that, uh, Ms. Mitchell talked about in the chat, we have students that are actually dealing with issues of trauma that are keeping them from being able to learn in the classroom and teachers who are dealing with issues of trauma that are having the same effect. So unless we actually deal with the, the, deal with things on, on both a macro and a micro level, we really won't be able to experience that beloved community that Dr. King talked about.
Absolutely. Uh, Ms. Davis, Dr. Davis?
Yeah.
Work that you're doing.
Thank you again.
Recommendations?
Yes, absolutely. Um, right now I am currently, as I mentioned earlier, I am out in, uh, school districts virtually and, uh, onsite at organizations and we are training. I'm training, uh, more and more educators to be equity-minded, to, uh, to have higher expectations, to be barrier breakers for, uh, for black students in particular, but for other students who have been marginalized. Uh, we're doing book studies on a, on a micro level. Uh, we're also, uh, I'm also part of an organization, a consortium of other black scholars like myself. Uh, these individuals, um, are from universities and school districts from across the nation. Uh, we are called the Consortium of Inclusion for Underrepresented Groups and Racial Groups and Gifted Education. I sent you by, by, um, I sent the information to you. And if not, if you don't have it now, I will actually send it to you again. So if you have a place to post um, this information to share with others, because I'm not alone out here in despite, and I'm so grateful that, um, first of all, stand on the shoulders of other giants who have been, who have done this work for many, many years. But now we are seeing a growing number of African-American scholars who are working to provide better access and equity and gifted and advanced learner programs. And we're not just talking about school-based programs, programs in schools. We're talking about specialized centers, regional schools. We're talking about breaking barriers to admissions to these regional schools. We are talking here about making sure that any school, once again, that's funded, that's funded by any local or, 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 or federal dollars for, to meet the needs of what, what are called highly gifted or potentially gifted students. We are talking about those schools getting funding from public sources. Therefore, our students need to be represented and have access to. And so it's very important, this work to me is extremely important. And I thank you again for allowing us to, uh, to, to have this time to share.
That was so powerful. That was powerful. Dr. Davis, before I turn it over to Dr. Malvo, we have just a few minutes and she wants to give closing remarks, but then I also need to then take the microphone and pump up an event that Push Excel is having in June. So I will thank you all so much. Uh, Dr. Malvo, we're going to go ahead and take it and leave it on the high. And we'd like to have you add insight to the recommendations or the comments that you've heard today.
Well, this has been such a great conversation, uh, just so rich, so yeah. Thank you, Dr. Whitaker, for your work, for putting this amazing panel together. I especially want to shout out Brother Ali for thinking outside the box. My theme and, uh, you did not introduce me as the dean of the College of Ethnic Studies at Cal State LA, where my theme is always, we don't do higher education as usual, we do higher education unusual. And that means that we have to think outside the box with Brother Ali has done. Brother, you just gave me an idea. I think we should tax these tech book manufacturers, tax them to put funds into professional development for teachers. Because if they produce all these books, won't they help somebody learn how to use the books? I mean, some of these books are just cray cray and we don't need them. So thank you for taking my brain out of the box to think about that. I want to lift up, uh, Sister Sharon, uh, Lisa Sharon Harper. Your book is sitting on my bookshelf at home right now, actually. I've gone through a chapter, but I'm doing ten things at one time and you know, it's graduation season. I got five graduations to go to because it's my first year as dean, so I got to show up to everybody's graduation, which I am excited about. But you, uh, close to my heart, I'm a member of NARC, the National African-American Reparations Commission. And I'm so glad that you mentioned the issue of reparations. It's not just about money. Oh yeah, we want the Benjamins. We, the only way we're going to close the wealth gap is have some exogenous infusions of dollars. But we also want repair of our health. Once upon a time, we had twenty, uh, we had a hundred and twenty black owned banks. Now we have twenty-three. There's a lot of work we want to do. And then finally, I want to thank Dr. Joy Lawson Davis for her focus on the gifted, because all too often, we don't want, but you know, all our children are gifted. If they just have the opportunity to be gifted, when you look at the reading gap, the number of books our kids touch that other kids don't touch, we know that your work is cut out for you, but our work is cut out for us. I once had a mayor of DC, put her hand on a podium, almost broke her hand, said, I'd do anything. You hear that thump? Anything to keep the Redskins in Washington DC. This was years ago. They're not Redskins anymore. But anyway, I said to her later, I said, what would you do to educate our children? I said, would you put your hand on a podium like that and almost break it to say that? And she looked at me like I had called her out because I had. Uh, the point is that we have to be as passionate of our children's education as we were about anything else. We have so much work to do. I'm not going to continue to pontificate. I just want to say that Brown is so very important, very important because it really does let us know how far we've come, but also how much further we have to go. Aluta, continue.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you so much, panelists. But we'll give you a silent round of applause. Uh, we want to invite you and the participating audience out to our annual convention. Yes, Rainbow Push Coalition and Push Excel. They're hosting our annual convention in person for the first time in a couple of years. And so we're going to ask you to mark your calendars for June eighteenth. We're going to go for several days after that. We're going to meet at headquarters. So if you haven't been, uh, to Chicago lately, we want the, our esteemed panelists, in fact, the panelists from all of our sessions to consider making the trip uh, to the Chicagoland area the week of the June eighteenth, where we'll do our kickoff on Saturday at headquarters and then make our way to, to South Shore. It's going to be an amazing experience. It will be networking on steroids here. So you got to see if you can make it to town. Thank you so much for our participating audience for, for being here. And we look forward to having you continue to sign up to participate in our national critical thinking series focused on redesigning America's education agenda. It has indeed been an awesome evening. Good night.
Good night.
Joy Rose, take it from here.